I'd like to observe a moment of silent prayer and reflection. Teri, would you mind calling the role?
Lisa Ramon.
Here.
Archiana Alliar.
Here.
Nicole Cohen.
Here.
John Mastin.
Here.
Kathy Cox.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to review and accept the agenda for today's session?
So moved.
Second.
John Mastin.
Yes.
Nicole Cohen.
Yes.
Lisa Ramon.
Yes.
Archiana Alliar.
Yes.
Superintendent Asire, will you lead off our discussion, please?
Yes, I would be happy to, thank you. So the board had received, and it was attached to agenda, after we discussed the actual definition and approved that for family life education, there was a request that we look at defining some of the terms. And so there were also some question about resources that were available. So I did send out to the board some information just to show that there are resources out there. And then we pulled from Webster's some of the definitions of the terms that appeared to be of interest to the board, which included the, sorry, I'm looking for my note here. I have it right here. What we would define as reproductive health, STD prevention, and pregnancy prevention were the major terms that were of note. And so there is some information here about those. And I had highlighted the part that I felt reflected the definition that would fit with the board's definitions. And then the other piece that is included in the backup information was some information on the STD prevention. And so what I did is I looked at some of the curricula that was out there. And primarily within STD prevention, they provided data, information about each disease, which I listed, methods of contact, and then methods of prevention. And so those were the major areas that I found under STD prevention, as well as a definition of an STD. And then the second area was pregnancy prevention. And so I did look to see in other curriculum, the areas that were primarily addressed, and the actual failure rates that were identified in the research. And so those are listed there. And all of this is really moving forward if, depending on what policy is developed, then it would be the guidance for developing a curricula or adopting a curricula, which is not the point that we're at yet. But because we had that conversation about definitions, all of that was included in the backup. And then the next step would be then, we have our definition, which is what you can see up on the board. And the idea from here would be, right below that is our existing policy. And so it would be for the board's discussion on modifications to the existing policy, from this point, how you wanted to move forward with the existing policy. And I do know that Mr. Mastin provided a suggestion that we look at the Tempe Union policy, which actually inadvertently, the wrong policy was emailed out to the board. So that is provided for you in hard copy. So if you'd like to take a moment and have a look at that as well. And then I would suggest then that the board move into a discussion on what would you like our policy to reflect now that we have this definition of what family education, family life education is for the, for the board. And then if you don't mind, I apologize, I need to step out for a moment. So Mr. Murray's gonna help facilitate the rest of that for a second.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Well, does anyone want to lead off?
I will.
Okay.
I did a little bit of quick research this morning. I get about an hour, hour and a half before I have to really, really work, work. And in doing that, I started just at random plucking through policy IAHMB through various districts throughout the state. And when I came upon the one from Tempe, basically what it does is it takes the state rulemaking.
The state what?
Rulemaking.
Okay.
So, so this is Department of Ed level on, on sex ed. And it basically correlates the revised statutes, and then it gets into the rulemaking and references rulemaking through each point within the policy. And it covers a lot of what we were concerned about in our discussions. So for instance, dating abuse information, that includes a definition of dating abuse and gives the cite, its warning signs gives the cite, and the characteristics of a healthy relationship and gives the cite. And so because it's citing specific areas of the law, and because when we finish this policy and the curriculum that goes with it, we're going to be subject to state approval and certification on our program, I believe that it's very important that we follow from the policy, which then would comport down into the actual curriculum, what the state rule is. Our definition comports very well if you go through and start looking at certain areas of it to what state rulemaking is. And then we turn around and we take this, which lays out the framework. I almost think that this is a good starting point for that framework and curriculum that we're after in the next step.
I personally am looking at this for the first time, and I would agree that it provides a good framework. And I do like the fact that it cites the rules as you were mentioning. There are a couple of things that stand out to me that might be at odds with some of the things that we've talked about. For instance, it does say shall promote honor and respect for monogamous heterosexual marriage. I do think that that's problematic, not because I disagree with honoring monogamous sexual, or monogamous heterosexual marriage, but because it does leave some students out of the discussion.
Well.
I think this is an old policy.
Actually, actually, if you go to the actual state administrative code book, which there's the page from it right there, from March 31st of 2019 is the last official update to the rulemaking, not to the law, but to the rulemaking. That's exactly how it reads. Now, state law has changed and rulemaking hasn't kept up with state law. And I would expect that we would drop any rulemaking sites out of there and remove those sections that don't comport to state law.
I just want to make sure that as a district, we're providing something that includes all of our students and doesn't purposefully leave out anyone.
When we, when we start talking about sexual education in our district, it would be remiss of the district to pigeonhole or to leave out in either, in either instance, whether to overly include or purposefully exclude certain students from that discussion.
I agree. And then one other thing, again, just at a first glance, something that stands out to me that we might consider removing, when it talks about parents who object to any learning material or activity on the basis that is harmful, because it's basically talking about the opt-in option for parents. I, it makes it sound like parents have to give us a reason why they would object to it. And I would say that parents have the right to not have their kids participate for any reason or no reason at all.
You're, you're absolutely correct. But again, it's citing the rulemaking, so it comports directly into what the Department of Ed rulemaking is. And so when you read it, that whole paragraph in context under parents' role, "Parents who object to any learning material or activity on the basis that is harmful may withdraw their children from the activity or from the class or program in which the material is used." Objection to learning material or activity on the basis that it is harmful includes, just giving you an example of what it might include, objection to a material or activity because it questions beliefs or practices in sex morality or religion. And that's, that's state law, that's also the rulemaking. So, so what our policy does is our policy informs our practice, or our curriculum, or in this case, practice. And that practice then needs to be, if you want your child to attend, you need to return the signed form, you need to opt them into the program. So if the parent objects to any of the materials, which would, I would hope would be available on our website, something where the parent can readily review it at a, at a glance to see what their child is about to learn, that they would then have that ability to say, you know, I don't agree with this, I'm just gonna take my kid out. But we have to have that line up in the policy.
Yes. Or even I do agree with this material, but I would rather my child not learn about it in a classroom setting.
Absolutely.
Yes. One thing that I was thinking, and it's a little bit, I think I'm putting the cart ahead of the horse a little bit on this one, but looking forward to the time when we do have a curriculum that we approve, I was thinking that we might want to have a preview night for parents, which might marry some of the ideas that we've talked about, getting parents involved and giving them a way to discuss this with their kids. And at a preview event, maybe the instructors who would actually be teaching the kids could give an abridged version of what they would be teaching. And if that happened before the curriculum was actually introduced to students, that would give parents even a better idea of what was being taught and give them the chance to decide whether they want their kids to participate or not.
So are you saying before adoption, or are you saying after adoption?
I'm saying after adoption, because I think if it was before, it would get to...
I don't, I don't see the necessary harm in that. But, but again, if we publish this correctly, this would be available for any parent at any time during their day to simply click on a link on the district website and review the entirety of what it is we're going to teach. And, and it would be my hope that we would go forward and follow Tucson's model and build our own, so to speak. And if we do that, right now, what we do is, what right now, what Mojave County Health Department's been doing is that they have been redacting a curriculum. And it would be my hope that we could publish an entire curriculum as we, as it is taught, as opposed to having, this is all of the available material, and we're only going to teach these certain sections.
I could go along with that.
I think that if parents had an opportunity to ask us one-on-one, you know, I mean, not one-on-one, but many-on-one, what about some of their concerns, we might be able to allay those concerns totally, and then they might be want, you know, more conducive to opting in.
And I actually pursued all the way to the Mojave County Health Department with my children. And it's kind of a roundabout way to do it. But yes, I was able to finally get to someone at the Health Department and get a question answered when I had a question about the curriculum.
So you're saying that they can, if anyone has a question, they can ask?
Well, what, when, when we, if we bring this in-house, which I believe is what we're looking to do, if we bring it in-house, then we will have instructors who are taught what's gonna, what's gonna be taught, we will have people at the schools that can answer questions, we'll have the curriculum out on the website, would be my hope. And it would be a completely transparent way to go through and do this, as opposed to the contract situation where it literally took me three days of phone calls and go here, go here, go here, go here, to get to the right person to get a question answered. I, I think we can make it much more transparent.
I'm not entirely on board with the idea of doing it in-house. I think it would be cumbersome to expect our teachers to cobble together a curriculum. And I do think that we already have a good template with the Department of Health Services. I think they were in place for a number of years, and our district office did not receive any complaints that I know of. I was, I had asked, and as far as I know, they, as far as I know, the district had received zero complaints, and as far as I know, the high school had received zero complaints. So I do think that they had a good curriculum in place, but that they needed the Ts to be crossed and the Is to be dotted. There were things, for instance, they did need to have a copy available here at the district office, and they did not. So bringing those types of things up to code, but still using their curriculum, would be my personal first choice.
No. I, I would correct the word code to law.
A code is another name for a law.
They, they put the district in a situation where the law was not followed. It would be my hope that we would actually do something in-house. I believe that our community standards are different from Tucson's, are different from Vail's, are different from Snowflakes, are different from Flagstaff's. And because our community values are going to be somewhat unique, I think if we pull a packaged curriculum off the shelf, we're now editing, just like we have been with, with the Mojave County Health Department, a set curriculum to comport to community standards. The other thing is, is that what we had been doing in outsourcing this is not only was it not available to the website, for the website, or for, for some type of a public display outside of having to come into the district office, which is cumbersome and not so transparent. But it also brought into, into question some copyright laws and some rulemaking there as to whether or not we could put what is actually being taught on our website. And then on top of that, if you took that work as an entirety or, or as a whole, that was more than what we were teaching. We were only teaching certain fine sections of what was in that material. So it would be my hope that we actually don't, that we actually do develop something.
A couple of points about putting it on the website. I did speak with a representative of the DHS, and she said that you cannot put it on the website because of copyright laws, but that you could have a hard copy available to parents in the district office.
And, and forgive me, but if we had our own, we wouldn't run into that problem.
That's true. And that brings me to my second point. I do think it's far less time-consuming to edit something that already exists than it is to create something that didn't exist before.
So I'd like to get back to actual policy, drafting the policy. And I would like to see a more clinical view. I'd like to not see a curriculum at all. I'd like to not see a course at all. I think we're thinking, we're not thinking about this how we should be. Our kids are inundated with sex. They know so much about sex education that far exceeds what's in the manual. And they don't need to be instructed on family life education the way they were from, from the Health Department. I would like to see us stick to what we decided that the definition was gonna be. And if I had my way, it would pretty much be on a double-sided piece of paper that the students could read, the parents could read, the students and parents could sign, so we know that they read it. That would give the students an opportunity, and it would open up a discussion with the parents. And we wouldn't have to waste any of our very limited resources discussing this topic that they are inundated with everywhere. You know, this started a long time ago, and we have to recognize what our kids are viewing every day. They see this stuff every day, all day long. So why do we have to have a course on it? Why do we have to spend money on a teacher for it? Or why do we have to purchase a curriculum for it? They need to know how to protect themselves, they need to know how to be safe. That's what we thought the intent was, if I'm not mistaken, was to protect themselves. That's very clinical. And it doesn't matter whether you're male, female, or what your sexuality is. You get pregnant the same way, you get an STD the same way, depending on the STDs. And that can all be in writing form. And so I would like to talk about how we're gonna go pursue the policy, rather than getting into the curriculum and all that, because that's, that comes later. So I would like to talk about that.
I would like to note that whatever information they have, first of all, not everyone has information. Secondly, not everyone has the same information. And thirdly, it might be totally incorrect. So we do need to formally educate them.
Well, that's what I'm, I am talking about, formally educating them. But, you know, I, I don't know if you had a chance to review the curriculum?
Yes.
It wasn't, it, it wasn't solely focused on how to protect themselves. It was telling them what kinds of relationships are healthy, and, you know, that's somewhere we don't need to be going, in my opinion, in this course, so...
But that's part of the state rule.
No, it's, we don't, no, it's not. That's not...
The characteristics of a healthy relationship is 157120183.
Do, do you have that statute printed up?
I got it.
Okay. That is fine, but that's not, we don't have to do sex education. And we don't have to do the way it's laid out in the Tempe one that you, now, I do like the formatting, but we don't have to do this.
Well, the, the point behind this is, is whether we like it or not, we've got a state agency in the Department of Ed that's done rulemaking on this. And if we don't comport to the rules when it comes time for that review, we're not going to have a fun time at the State Board of Education getting this approved. I'd like to send them something that they would approve based on the fact that we comport to the rules. Now, can we take our definition versus the rules and come up with something that would be acceptable to the State Board and honor our community? I think we can. But I, I think that if we don't have something like this, where we're going chapter and verse against the rules, we're gonna be in a world of hurt when we come to the state.
But this is, this policy is alternating between rule and statute.
You're, you're correct, because some things are in the rules and some things are in the statutes. And, and unfortunately, you have to comport both.
Okay. I understand that. We're not gonna find anything, in my opinion, in our state as an example of what you can or can't do, because nobody's got a, nobody's got a definition like ours in the state of sex ed, in my, they're all using, I'm gonna assume, a county curriculum in, in each of the counties, just because nobody has actually offered up a curriculum to be approved at the state level as required by law. So...
Tucson Unified has.
Right. Well, there was five. When I say nobody, I'm sorry. I meant there was five districts when we did the FOIA request that actually submitted. So they must have been one of the five. But in terms of a policy, I mean, I guess we need to get clear on what it is that we're gonna do. You know, Lisa wants a off-the-shelf box. I don't. We're, we're not gonna be able to share it with families, we're not gonna be able to put it on our website, we're not gonna be able to be transparent about it. And it's just inappropriate for our kids to come to school and then have a curriculum, which all of them are, that overstepped the bounds of family values and question, and allow for there to be questions put in a, in a child's mind that this is correct, we're your teachers, and your parents are wrong, or your church is wrong. And I don't want that happening. If the, if the point is to protect kids from STDs and pregnancy, and, you know, explaining to them that no means no, I mean, I don't see why we would have to buy a boxed curriculum that is not intended to do that.
Well, a couple of things. From what I understand from the DHS, it is their intent through their program to give kids the basic facts that you were talking about, how to protect themselves, how to say no, issues of consent and those types of things. As far as being transparent, you're right, it can't be on the website, it can be in here in the district in a hard copy, and to me, that does satisfy the requirement for transparency. Parents would have access to it.
So the parents that work full-time, that can't get off before the district office closes, you think that that's okay? Monday through Friday, now you have to take time off work, so you can come down and check the curriculum that's gonna teach your children things that you don't want taught? You think that that's acceptable?
I think that it is acceptable to have it in the district, that those are the guidelines that have been provided. Now, I don't know if you heard me earlier when I was talking about the idea of a preview event, but that would be another way to increase transparency with parents.
I, I don't disagree with the preview event. But I think that the point of the exercise, I mean, if, if we wanted to rubber stamp this, we would have simply taken the changes from ASBA, we would have rubber stamped it, we would have said great, and we would have kept on trucking down the road, no matter if we were compliant or not. The fact of the matter is, is that we're here and we're making definitions and policies and in the future curriculum decisions, so that we can have something that we believe is better for our community. And that doesn't mean pulling a box off the shelf. That means that we have to sometimes roll up our, our sleeves, get into it, and, and build something that is gonna be better for our community. I know you want better for our community, and I know you want better for our community, and I sure know she wants better for our community. If we don't take a customized approach to this and get past the box mentality, we're gonna be in trouble in, in a lot of ways down the road, because the boxed products are going to introduce a lot of things that I don't believe our community will support.
Again, the curriculum that I'm referring to has been in place in our community for the prior 10 years. And during that time, our district did not receive any complaints, and our high school did not receive any complaints. So it did work for our community for that time.
No, it didn't, and I'll tell you why. The reason that we found out we had a sex ed policy is because I was told by a parent who allowed their children to go through it because she didn't want to complain, because she was afraid of retaliation. So that doesn't work. Saying that there has been no formal complaints made is not, that, that doesn't mean anything to me. Because, just because you haven't had a formal complaint, doesn't mean that parents are okay with it. It means they don't want to be the one to speak up, because they don't want to have their child, you know, somehow brought into it, even if it's just making fun, oh, your mom complained, or oh, your dad complained. I don't want kids in that situation. And that is why people did not complain about the, about it being in our school district, at least the person that informed me that we were doing it in our school district.
Well, and, and to be realistic, if you work, and let's just assume it's nine to five while your kids are in school, and the curriculum that's being taught is not available for review anywhere, and all you get is a form saying, do you want to opt your kid in or not? How much do you really know about the curriculum to complain? And are your kids, who don't want to talk to you about this stuff anyway, it's embarrassing for most of them, are they gonna come home and say, hey, I did X, Y, and Z today at school with the, with the sex ed class? They're not gonna do any of that. So what is the basis to generate the complaint? How, how would you, if nothing goes wrong in that class, get a complaint at all? And then would you complain to the district, or would you complain to the Mojave County Health Department?
I would complain to the district. But at the risk of sounding like a broken record, did you hear what I said about the preview event? That would, that even if I work nine to five, that gives me an option to review the material prior to it being taught to my child.
I, I did. And in, and in the busy schedule of a family, you have to make it convenient for the family. We service our community. We service our parents, we service our students, and we service our community members in what we do. And to do that, we have to be in a position where we are convenient to use. And if we have a preview event and parents can't make it, or we have it in the district office and parents can't come here, in the electronic age, that's not really an excuse. We need to have something that we can put out on display electronically, so that anybody can go and click on their phone, or on a link in a web browser, and look at it and know, this is what my kid is gonna learn.
We will have to agree to disagree there, because I do feel like providing two paths for parents to investigate is reasonable.
Also, this being such a controversial subject, I think if something had come up, if children had learned something contrary to their parents' values or their church's values, those parents would have said something, you know, eventually, in 10 years.
Or perhaps they do what a lot of parents do, and they go, okay, now I gotta fix this. There's a lot of things that, that come home to my house from school that I go, I'm gonna have to change this perception, I'm gonna have to fix this. And, and this was one of them.
So you did face it?
I've, I've had two children go through it. And as I got deeper into what was actually taught, as I have found out things in, sitting on this board, I haven't been happy about it. And I didn't view it as the district teaching it, because we had a third party come in to teach it. I viewed it as the Health Department. And when I inquired, when I wanted information, I went to the district, and the district went, oh, no, you gotta talk to the Health Department. It's not transparent at that point, it's not easy to use, it's a boxed product, and you can't really get in and find out what's in it, because it's off-site, or it's in somebody's office, and you gotta make an appointment to come see it. We faced this issue before, by the way, with the finances.
I definitely agree, I'm sorry. I definitely agree that being electronic would help, sorry. I definitely agree, I'm sorry, I definitely agree that being electronic would help, sorry.
Back, back when we had issues with budget and finance and bond and override and teacher pay, you couldn't get a financial number out of here without a FOIA request and an act of Congress, literally.
But yet, in every board meeting, we heard, well, if you want to know, just come in and you can look, and that's what that sounds like. And I don't, I don't mean anything by it, but that's what it sounds like to people. Oh, you're more than welcome to come in and take a look, but it's just not that simple for some families, so.
And so, that's why one of the first pushes was to get all of the financial data that we could on that website.
That's right.
That's why it's there, is, is in the interest of transparency, and for a controversial subject such as this, I believe it has to be, it just has to.
And, and in, and in looking at the state rule, 2C, under the R 72303, you can't buy a boxed curriculum that doesn't violate 2C, it's just not possible. Lessons shall not include tests, psychological inventory, surveys, or examinations containing any questions about the student's or his parents' personal beliefs or practices in sex, family life, morality, values, or religion. You can't.
I, I would like to see something from the DHS that includes a test, a psychological inventory, a survey, or an examination.
I thought you reviewed the county curriculum.
I reviewed it in part, I did not see anything that was a test, a psychological interview.
Surveys.
That they were discussing in, like, topics that they were discussing in class.
Sex education, the sex ed program was financially incentivizing the students to do surveys, and it's in their program.
I did not see that, I would have to look at that again.
I have a screenshot of it, if you want me to pull it up.
Go ahead.
Are we recognizing public discussion, or are we limiting?
Except to the board, I think you're at this point, except to the board, we don't do public discussion, and my concern would be right now is, is the discussion, and I apologize that I had to step out, is it relevant to the discussion about continuing with policy development, since we're not at the curriculum point, or?
I, I'd like to see us move back to policy development personally.
I do see your hand in the back, I think at this time, we are not opening it up for public discussion, but we may later on in the meeting.
We, we may, or we will?
Well, we get to decide as a board.
No, we, we.
Superintendent Sire just told me that we get to decide as a board.
I, I would, Madam President, Madam Vice President, I would almost insist that we open it up to public discussion.
I'm okay with that, but I'm saying that we have agreed to decide as a board.
Well, I would like to do that, and I'd like to do it sooner rather than later.
In the special session, we don't have public comment, but you, but typically, the board does take input from the public. The question is, decide whether you want to take it, and I apologize, I wasn't clear, during this part of your discussion, or after you've had an opportunity to discuss it as a board. So that's where you have a decision.
So would you like public comment now, or would you like it later?
I would like it now.
Okay, are we limiting it to five minutes?
Yes.
Yes. Would you still like to speak, or would you like to wait till later?
I'd like to speak now, please.
Please come up to your microphone, the microphone, and if you wouldn't mind, state your name.
My name is Richard Hawkins, and I was a substitute teacher here, gosh, maybe 15 years ago or so, but I want to say that I substituted in a sixth grade social studies class for Sarah Williams over in Daytona Middle School at the time, and Sarah had set up, they had a special projects teacher at the school there, and she had set up for the special projects teacher to come and give a lesson. Well, the lesson of the day was a video that came from the SPLD, Southern Poverty Law Center, SPLC, and it was called A Place at the Table, and it was a total propaganda piece on pro homosexuality, and for the six classes, because I didn't know what I had, authority I had in that, and for the six classes that I had taken the role in, many of the students were shell shocked, and I had mentioned the next day, because that, that special projects teacher had the whole day, whole session, and I mentioned to the class, I said, if anything has upset you, you need to talk to your parents about it, but they were visibly shaken, a number of them were. None of the parents were ever notified, none of the parents ever came in and complained. I went to the Brad Gardner's predecessor at the time, Gold, Gold, Goldsmith or something like that, and complained to him, and the, the curriculum was not authorized, the principal was shaken up about it as well, but the comment was, well, the kids are going to tell their parents, or, or if the subject matter is contrary to what the parents' values are, the kids are going to bring it up. They don't, and they just took it in, they were shell shocked, and I told them, there are certain values that the school's going to be teaching that are going to be contrary to what you find in your family, you need to go to your parents, and you need to discuss it with them, because they have the authority. But just bear that in mind, the kids do not take it to their parents, for whatever reason. So, that's it, thank you.
Would anyone else at this time like to speak publicly? Sorry, there's one person standing up. You, would you like to speak first, and then after her, Mrs., Mrs. Cox?
My name is Kristin Ray, and in listening to you, I do appreciate the opt-out, but I have to say, why in the world is this discussion even happening? This is something that should be in my home and my children, it's my business, and I appreciate your wisdom, I appreciate the amount of work it took to even become who you are as teachers and as leaders, I appreciate that, but I know my children better than you, and I know what my son and my daughter need, and I know that I can effectively and capably do that in my own home. This should not be happening. I couldn't agree more, as far as clinically, that is important, there are kids that can't speak to their parents, and they need somebody they can go to, and I fully appreciate that. As a, a local leader in our community, I have kids coming to me when they can't come to their own parents. But again, I, I sit here today, and as a citizen of Lake Havasu, I am a capable parent, and I appreciate your status, but I am capable and able to teach my children. I think it should be education that you stay with, reading, writing, and arithmetic, and nothing more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cox, would you like to speak?
Madam Vice President, and Mrs. Assistant Sergeant Sire, and members of the board, a couple comments. First off, I think, I, I look back over the last several years, and I do remember the times, myself included, and I'm sure other people in our audience today, that I came to this school district and this board and members of the district office asking for information, not specifically with regard to family life education, but financial information, benefit trust information, whatnot, and simply could not get anything. It was at a time when our website was woefully in need of updates, information was not available, and it was just a very hard, it was, it was a rigorous, painful time that we just couldn't get any information about a lot of things. We've made such tremendous changes, we had bonds and overrides fail in our, in our community because our school district always, always, our school district was being accused of just not caring about sharing information and not being transparent, and we, myself, my daughter, a lot of members of our community, including all of our schoolteachers, our administrators, all the people in our community, put a tremendous effort into getting our bonds and our overrides passed, because the promise was, we are going to be transparent, we're going to fix this. Our bond, we just got upgraded, if I'm, memory serves, and there's been a tremendous effort in putting all that information out, and it has been consistently getting better and better and better. Every time I go to the website, I see something new and different and better, and if I need to find something now, the first thing I do is go to the website to try and find something, not it, not the last thing, not asking for, you know, requests for records, and I spent months getting requests for records in the beginning. I have looked at other district websites where they actually do have their family life education curriculum posted, the entire thing, and they're created internally, because they're targeting information on clinical information, so it's not that it's impossible, it's that it is based on what their community needs, and so I don't think that we can necessarily compare Lake Havasu City to Tempe, Tucson, Gilbert, I mean, and I've looked at a lot of these, my concern is that, and I have looked quite a bit at the over 400 pages of the Mojave County School District, or the Mojave County Health Department curriculum, unfortunately, it's outdated, and it is going to be upgraded, and it is going to be upgraded to something that is more closely being taught, that if you think that what is there now is contentious, just wait till you see what is coming, because I've seen those before, and I have looked at the information that is on, in the rules that are updated now, and I have actually seen the forms and the surveys and whatnot, especially the one that bothered me in particular from Mojave County was the, the survey of going home and asking your parents what their personal preferences were sexually. I would have never, and I don't ever remember my children bringing that one home to me, and I can imagine if they ever got it, that I can understand why they never did, why they never gave it to me, and so those are, again, another one of the reasons why maybe you didn't get any of those complaints. I certainly, and if I had gotten that, I probably, it would have been a historical moment in high school in Lake Havasu, because I probably would have gotten arrested, not really, but, for flavor. Anyway, my point of that is being that I, I fully support clinical education on STD prevention, pregnancy prevention, adoption, prenatal health, those kinds of things, and I think that having all of that information, specifically having it available electronically in our community, even though, and especially because, and I really lament those times when we had our live feeds on, for our board meetings, because we do have disabled people in the community, people that just barely get off work, and they're like, gosh, do I spend five minutes with my kids, or do I go to this meeting, or whatever, and they want to live, they want to livestream, they want to be able to do that, they want to log, you know, we're, we're in electronic age, and whether or not people do it or not, it's the option that it's there, and there are times when I love, I would love to be able to come to previews and things, and, and do all of those things, but we, we, we don't, we have to make choices, and if it means spending an extra 25 minutes with my husband, or my kids, or my grandkids, yeah, they're going to get it over you guys, I'm sorry, that's just, that's the way it's going to be. But if I can spend from 10 to 11 at night, reading it online myself and starting asking questions, I can do that, so I would just encourage that, that you think about that, because there are a lot more grandmothers like me out there than there are, well, if I get one chance to do a preview night, and then it's going to be in the school district office, and those are my one-and-dones, yeah, that, that's, I don't think that that's a fair, that's not fair to the people that live here and that are supporting the district and that are, because of the expectation that we have now for transparency, I, I'm going to hold you to it.
Thank you. Yes, please.
My name is Dale Ray, I'm the dad of Kristin Ray. My children were raised in the school district here, so they are a product of the educational system here in Lake Havasu, we've been a part of it for 47 years, and so I appreciate very much all of your work, all that you're doing, and the clinical approach, I highly understand and appreciate that type of an approach. But to go much different, I'm also a senior pastor and have pastored the church here in Lake Havasu for 40 years, and I'm going to speak on behalf of a number of other pastors that are in this area as well, too, and tell you that you, if you take a canned program, you're going to be getting into areas that are political, and you do everything you can to avoid politics in this district. Probably the only reason that we're talking about this is because there is a new director of education over the state of Arizona, and that's politics. So I'm asking you, please, keep politics out of it, as much as you do your best to keep politics out of other things, keep it out of sex education as well, too. Keep it clinical, don't move into areas that are exploratory, they, you're moving into very dangerous territory there. Also, don't do a one-and-done, because a one-and-done, five years down the road, then who's coming back in? It was nice that you offered a night, but five years down the road, there's a brand-new group, a group of parents and children that are coming into the system, and I am very, very concerned, and I have you all in my prayers, I'm not, I'm not standing against you at all, I know that you've got your hands full, and I appreciate the fine education that my children both received through Lake Havasu, but I'm also saying that you're treading on some very dangerous political grounds, and I'm very concerned as a pastor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So, if I may, there are currently two areas in our policy. There is the lower grades up to eighth grade, and there's grades nine to 12. Maybe what we should be, should be looking at now is those lower grades, and how would we construct something for those lower grades in a policy?
I would be open to that, and we do currently have something for our fifth graders that deals strictly with hygiene, puberty, and it is separated, it's boys and girls, it is just clinical information, does anyone have a problem with keeping that in place?
Well, that's curriculum.
Yes.
And, and we're here to talk about policy.
Right.
And so, when I look at our policy, the one thing that stands out that I would like to change is I don't want it to say K-8, I want it to say 5-8.
I'm sorry, can you tell me?
At the, at the top of our current policy.
And I'm sorry, that's up on the screen also for your.
It says instruction in sex ed, grades K-8, I'd like to take the K out, and I'd like to put the number five in there. So we would teach it in fifth to eighth grade, as opposed to allowing it to go down as far as kindergarten.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't personally have a problem with that, but because our schools are K through 12, I think our policy has to encompass all of them, that does not obligate us to start teaching anything at the kindergarten level, but our policy still has to encompass them.
I don't, I don't think it has to, we can be more restrictive from policy, from state law, but we can't be less restrictive, and so in the actual definition, our, it does read that the, that sex education at LHUST refers to teaching students between fifth and 12th grade about human reproduction, and so the way that this is delineated is the, the rules and the statute are specifically broken out K-8 and 9-12, but you could limit it to 5 through 8 and 9 through 12, you could limit it to grade 5 and 9 if you chose to do that as a policy for the board. The, the one problem with the Tempe Union is that it does not include the rules for the, for the primary grades, which include advisory committee if there's curriculum developed, and that is different from the 9 through 12 rules. The other thing, I apologize that I had to step out earlier, that the statements that are in the current policy are also aligned with the statute and the rules, and so format-wise, if the board prefers to have each time noted, that can be done as well.
As I was reading through over the past couple of months, it seems that puberty is, is happening earlier and earlier, so there's kids that have already gone through puberty by fifth grade, so I don't know, and, and that has to do with diet, and, you know, a whole bunch of other factors, so I'm wondering if, and I know that our definition says fifth through 12, but I'm wondering if that's something that we shouldn't be considering, maybe it should be fourth grade, and that's not for today's meeting, but in keeping with that line of thinking. But in keeping with that line of thinking, I don't think we should be waiting till ninth grade to introduce the clinical part of what I have in mind either. I think that should be seventh grade.
Well, and, and if you remember during the discussion on the definition, my thought process was five, seven, nine on, on grades.
But I, I do see Mrs. Cohen's point about, um, helping kids and particularly pertains to girls, but helping them understand that if puberty kicks in early, that it means that their body's doing what they're supposed to and, and so that they're prepared for that. Not, because I understand we've heard from some very excellent examples of parenting in this room, um, people who talk to their kids and I believe you when you say that you know your child best. Um, not every parent has these types of frank-handed conversations with their children and we want to make sure that they're prepared as well. So I would completely be on board to, um, lowering the age to fourth grade if it comes to that.
For, oh, for the puberty and hygiene?
Yes.
What, what is your objection to get to it?
I, what you, what you allow, you get. What you allow, you get. So if, if you in a statement say, I'm going to allow X, you're going to wind up with X at some point. And when you start to look at some of the newer materials that Mrs. Cox, uh, alluded to, they encompass programs in kindergarten, first grade now. And I don't believe that we need to be encompassing kindergarten and first grade in this type of material, uh, whether it's clinical or not. I think it's, I think it's doing a disservice to our students. Uh, we can have a really great discussion on fourth grade or fifth grade for, for the puberty talk and the hygiene talk. But I, I think if you go down too low on that number, I think that you're inviting something down the road programmatically. And I would much rather see before we go down in age range, that we have another frank board discussion as to why and do public due diligence against a policy and a definition as opposed to just approving, uh, something that an ad hoc committee brings forward, which is the way that this would work.
If we changed it today from grades four to eight, that does not obligate us to then...
It actually doesn't comport to the definition, so it would be incorrect against the definition.
We would have to change the definition to four, fourth through 12.
And we could do that as well.
And I would like to see our policy cleaned up, you know, this, as we go forward, you know, I would like it to be very clear. And, you know, this is, the current way it sits was with the understanding that we weren't doing it, so if we did do it, this is what we would have to go through. So I would like to clean up our policy to say, this is what we are going to do. Uh, and I would like to follow the format that John sent out. I think that's fantastic because then that allowed, it's an educational opportunity for anybody who actually reads the policy, then you can jump to, oh, and then you can just learn, oh, there's statutes and rules and where all this is coming from. Um, but in terms of the policy for the sex ed part that has been taught in ninth grade, again, I would like to see it clinical. I'd like to see it in seventh grade and I'd like the board's thoughts on that.
I, I would absolutely agree with clinical.
I would too, but I would like to hear a little bit, when you say clinical, I, what exactly are you talking about?
Well, I would like to stay focused on the actual definition at the top that Jamie just moved. I would like us to be, before we go off anywhere else, I would like us to clinically describe, um, male, female anatomy intercourse, human gestation and birth and, and not in a, I don't know what the word I'm looking for. Um, I don't want it in like this kumbaya, we're joking around in ninth grade and, you know, kind of during PE class. I want it to be more serious because it is serious. It's very serious, all of it is. Um, so I don't know if, I, I really don't want to see, um, us having a special class just for that. I don't know if it belongs, where it belongs at that age level and you...
Probably in seventh grade science, I would think we took the...
But I think that's what I mean by more clinical. I don't want it to be, oh, we're in sex ed class today. It's just part of the, you know...
Yeah, we need to...
Appropriate, science would be appropriate. And it just be a more serious subject matter where they are actually getting facts that aren't convoluted with all these other outside things that are included in every curriculum that I've looked at with sex ed. And when it comes to the STD prevention, um, I would like that to be very clinical as well. I mean, uh, this was one of the sources that I provided when we had our first meeting from the medinstitute.org where they've got, I mean, this is all definitions of everything our kids need to know. There's no fluff. I mean, I don't know how many pages there are because I don't think it's numbered, but I mean, there's at least 40 pages here and this explains everything technically. And it's sourced and it's reviewed constantly. And that's what I mean by more clinical. The, these kids aren't stupid and if they know how to read, they can read. If these kids are in seventh grade and let's say they're from one of the families that you said they can't talk to their family, if they have a source that's a serious source and they're thinking about something, say they feel like they're, you know, they're in this relationship and they're in love and they're going to get married and they're going to make decisions that we all know that they'll regret, but at least they can actually read about what will happen to them if they make that choice without somebody's opinion in there. Because there's a lot of opinion that's weaved through, um, and, and conflicting worldviews that are weaved through all the sex education that comes in a standard, uh, curriculum that you would buy off the shelf. So I, I'm not sure if I'm explaining it properly or if it's coming out right, but that's what I mean by clinical. And honestly, these students on this subject matter, they need to take responsibility for themselves. And we don't need to have a bunch of adults, uh, making excuses for why we need to overstep parental guidelines because there are students that can't talk to their parents. We need to make sure that we treat this subject seriously and part of that is demanding that the student is responsible for their behavior and their actions and the consequences that'll follow depending on the, the decisions they make.
And helping them understand practically what that responsibility might look like. Would you agree with that statement?
With...
For instance, if we're going to say, well, you have to take responsibility for your actions, I don't think you can just leave it there with a seventh grader. I think you have to say...
Can I, can I put a caveat to that? I, I think that, I think that what we're dancing around here and, and we're dancing a lot is a good program like this does not supplant parental authority. This is an augment to parental authority, it is not in place of. That is why we opt in. We don't opt out, we opt in. Junior can't just drop the permission slip on the way home and say, nope, lost it, dog ate it, whatever, and get into, get into the, the sex ed class. But what we're dancing around is the word abstinence. And I believe what the purpose of this is, is twofold. The first one is, and the primary focus, and this is state law and in the rulemaking, is to get the child simply not to do it. They're not old enough to make a decision in the eyes of the law and that's the legal side of it, but they're not emotionally mature enough to deal with the consequences. And to give them a glimpse at those consequences, you're exactly right. This is what's going to happen to you if you get an STD. This is the medical stuff that's going to happen and this is the pain you're going to go through and these are the problems you're going to have 20 years down the road. But on top of that, we also need to equip that child in case, in the heat of the moment, something does happen that we all don't want to happen. And we need to have them in a position where they can say, yes, I, I was adequately prepared, I probably shouldn't have done that, it was probably a mistake, I want a little guilt in that thought process as well because I'm a parent that believes in guilt, sorry, I am. And, and that's what we want out of this program. Now, there's a series of set, of state rules and statutes that we've got to deal with. There's a policy that we've got to do this evening, but that's the end goal of this. And if we all wrap our heads around that as the end goal is to keep our children from having sex in the first place, that may help us get to actually writing a policy. And I, and I think that's where we're, we're, we're really drifting off course here is we keep going to, what's the curriculum going to look like? What's the curriculum going to look like? And really, we're here to craft a policy. And so when we say, okay, let's move it to five or let's move it to four in the beginning here where it says grades on, on the screen, that's where we got to start. And then from there, we've got to go through and we've got to start making decisions on what the policy is going to look like. And if we don't get moving on this, we're going to be here till midnight.
I know, we do. Just one thing, um, because you brought it up, if I gave the impression that I was avoiding the topic of abstinence, I'm not. I think that there are a lot of good things to say about abstinence and that those things absolutely ought to be part of what we teach kids. Um, so...
Not, not at all my, not at all my point, we just seem to be dancing around what the end goal here is.
Okay. So, um, can we change the definition tonight if we chose to, to, um, to include fourth grade instead of fifth?
Correct. So the definition that you came up with was intended to be a part of your policy, so as a part of your policy discussion, you can make those revisions, absolutely.
I, I then have to ask a medical question because, because I'm a guy and I only got two, two females in my house and my, and one of my females just went through the change of, of, of hormonal balance.
She'll be so thrilled you're talking about that.
She won't know. So, so the bottom line is, is do we have a preponderance of young ladies going through that change in fourth grade as opposed to fifth grade? I mean, is, is this an overwhelming issue within our district? And Mrs. Walter is saying no.
Emotionally, we're seeing changes in kids.
We're seeing a lot of the mood changes earlier, you know, some of the things that would have been once upon a time more along the lines of middle school attitudes, kind of that independence, kind of questioning authority, but going through the actual physical changes and we're not seeing huge numbers. You always have variance individuals, but it's not the most common thing in fourth grade.
So it, it would probably be district-wide, a handful or two handfuls of students.
Correct. And, and the goal is always to educate so that they're informed when it does happen prior to, for it happening, but it's not something that most kids at that age are having to deal with.
And, and so I would say, just like you're thinking about, um, the kids that need this information because they don't have it at home, you don't want to leave them out even though we hear parent after parent over the past few months say, please don't go there. You would like to go there because of those students. I think it's important, even if it's only two handfuls of kids, for the same reason I think it would be important in fourth grade. I mean, we're not talking about sex ed in fourth grade, it's about changes that are going to happen in the next year, year and a half. But I got, I got the idea that it was a lot more than that, but again, that was something national that I was, that I was... Okay. Well, I guess I'm wrong then and everything I read about it was wrong, but...
Well, I, and if you're going to say, is it an overwhelming problem?
No.
I know you're not.
I wasn't.
I know you're not. And so I would say, yes, probably not.
Right.
But, um, it does apply to some students and even the, the students that don't, that it doesn't apply to yet, it will almost certainly within the next, you know, year or two or three.
And so I, I would maybe ask, um, since I haven't been around fourth graders in a long time, but as I'm walking through classrooms, they still seem very young to me. Um, maybe, and I don't want to put our principals on the spot, but, um, in the interest of helping a handful of kids, would it be perhaps inappropriate for the remainder of kids who are still very immature at fourth grade? And we look at, and I use this based on my middle school experience, we see very little girls and little boys at middle school and we see ones that you would think are ready to graduate from high school.
Right.
So I know we have extremes, um, but the maturity level of fourth graders and their level of abstract thinking and sophistication, that would be my, my concern only.
Okay.
For the majority of students, so. And I don't know if, uh, Ms. Triasi wouldn't, would like to comment on that or not.
If you wouldn't mind coming to, coming to the microphone.
And, and while she's coming up, I would just like to say, I would like to think of this kind of as an opportunity, we could use this whole subject matter, both puberty and sex ed, as an opportunity to engage parents with their students. Because that is really, you know, why we are even talking about it in the first place. And that's getting harder and harder with parents texting kids in the next room. This would be an opportunity to actually get parents and kids talking.
Uh, my name is Cory Triasi, I'm the principal of Starline Elementary. We started when I took over the position at Starline, presenting puberty, hygiene, you know, wearing deodorant, uh, that kind of thing to our fifth graders. Fourth grade kids, in my estimation, are way too young. Even having that discussion with fifth graders, we send a letter home, all parents are invited to come into the session. Um, this year we had one parent, I, I conducted the girl's meeting and then my, our school psychologist conducted the boys, they're separated. Um, it was still awkward for them. I asked them if they have any questions and they don't want to ask it open in a, in a class setting to write it on a piece of paper so they wouldn't feel nervous and embarrassed. And they still get their little Snickers and they struggle with just some of the, the basic clinical discussion about your body changes. So I, fourth grade's way too young, in my estimation and my experience.
I'm totally fine with that. But seventh grade is not too young for the clinical information required.
Yes. So let's talk about seventh grade, strictly seventh grade, what policy parameters do we want to put in place for that?
Well, can, can we agree then that that's a five, five to eight?
That's fine. I just thought I would bring up what I had been reading about.
No, I, I appreciate that.
Will you make a motion?
No, we don't need to make a motion. We're, what we'll do is we'll, what we've done historically is we've crafted the policy and then moved the entire document.
As we all stare at you. Okay.
So, so seventh grade.
Yes.
My hope for seventh grade is that we get into more of the STD discussion. Um, what we got from Mojave County Health when they showed up was that the pregnancy rates are down and dropping like a rock. They, the kids get how not to get pregnant, whether it's through abstinence or condoms or whatever it is that they're doing so that they don't get pregnant, they're not getting pregnant at the same rate that they did historically.
And to add to that, I believe it was a 25-year, year trend that they were citing.
Correct.
Yes.
And, and on the flip side of that though, the STD rate is going through the roof. And so whether we like it or not, part of that discussion with a seventh grader probably should encompass STDs in a very clinical fashion, in a very straightforward fashion, don't do this or this is going to happen type of a thing.
Um, I would definitely agree with the STDs. Are you thinking only talk about the different STDs, like list them out and describe their symptoms or are you also suggesting that we talk about contraception?
I think it's got to be high school light. In, in other words, when they get to ninth grade, it needs to be a, a deeper discussion in, in protection, uh, all the way around. But I, I think in the seventh grade, I think you're going to have those outliers that are experimenting at that young age with sex, as much as we don't want to acknowledge that, that's really literally what's happening. And if we were to have that discussion at that grade level, I think we need to do a lighter version of what we're doing at the high school level. We, we need to have maybe not, not as deep into practices and so on, but into, into some basic contraception, very basic contraception and the fact that those diseases exist and you're probably, abstinence is the, is the absolute best way to do it.
Would it be fair to say that you, or do you think that, um, a simple instruction on where, the basics of where do babies come from should be addressed with seventh graders? Like reproductive health?
Yes.
It would have to be because of the way that the diseases are transmitted.
Okay. What do you think? You look like you have something to say.
Well, I just think that, um, you know, the pregnancy being down, it, nobody talked about the measurement and how they got, they came to that conclusion and that's a nationwide, pregnancy is down, but that's because we have on-demand abortion, abortion and, and birth control is very easy to get. So, and kids aren't in the dark about how you protect yourself. So, and kids aren't in the dark about how you protect yourself because they're on the internet a lot and it's everywhere. I mean, it's ridiculous. But I will say on the STDs, a picture is worth a thousand words. And I'm going to share my own anecdotal, and it was probably not appropriate at the time. But I was a single mother and so when my daughter was in seventh grade, we got our first Apple computer. And I remember just being horrified at what I could find online. And when she was in seventh grade, I started and she's, she's going to laugh when she watches this video. She's 30 now. But I would call her from the other room, Taylor Renee, come in here. And she would come in and I would have herpes, you know, a picture of, you know, female, male herpes. And I was like, this is what you will get if you have sex. Not if, not maybe, not protect yourself. You will get this. And so I did that like probably four times a year until she was in high school. And, and she told me it worked. She had lots of friends that had sex, but she was paranoid. So I'm going to say when it comes to STDs, the clinical definitions, but this is the part I would like the parents, you know, involved in. And I think this is the opportunity for the parents as well. I think you can't make an impression that is more powerful than those pictures. But I think that is for the parents. You know what I'm saying? To, to have that opportunity with their children. So I don't think seventh grade is too young for STDs, clinical and, and definitional. You know, exactly how you get gonorrhea, exactly, you know, how it will manifest when you do. But also making it clear that sometimes there's no symptoms at all. Because that's one of the things that, oh, I'm clean, I'm clean. Planned Parenthood tells me to look at myself. I'm clean, I'm good to go. But you might not necessarily have any symptoms. I think that's the biggest thing to get across. But I would like it in clinical form, in a science class or whatever. And then encourage maybe, you know, some home discussions. That's my thought on it. I don't know how you write that.
So in, in looking at the policy, is there anything that we would change in that policy? Because, because what it says is that basically we'll have an ad hoc committee that we'll put together with the district's size, racial and ethnic composition, that we will review the total instruction materials for lessons presented as a board. The board shall publicize and hold at least two public hearings to receive input at least one week prior to the board meeting, which sex education lessons will be considered for approval. The board shall maintain for viewing by the public total instructional materials to be used in the, in the approved sex, sex education lessons within the district. The superintendent shall before recommending the offering of instruction sex education, develop and implement regulations that meet the requirements of Arizona regulatory and statutory law. And if sex education is offered in grades seven or eight, that instruction shall include laws relating to sexual conduct with a minor. That's, that's what we have currently. Is there anything that we think we need to change within that?
Well, I think we take all of that out.
Okay.
Because that is the law. I mean, that's the law we have to follow in order to teach anything in our school at that grade. But I don't think we need to have it listed there. It was listed there because we weren't doing it. So that was.
Then what, what, what would we put in its books?
That's what I just said. I don't know how to write that up. So you're saying grades five, maybe we break it out. Grade five, we're going to teach about puberty, hygiene. And then grade.
That could be some, very simply, something, instruction in sex education will be offered in conformance with the law. So that, that first statement. And then basically say that instruction in grades five shall be limited to hygiene and puberty. And then instruction in grade seven shall be limited to, or you say shall include, so it depends on how you want to word that. And what I heard is, is really it's got to be part of the anatomy. I'm looking, I'm looking back up at the definition. The anatomy, the information about intercourse, human gestation, because that's going to be the method. And then probably pregnancy prevention and STD prevention would be what I would say your wording would be for seventh grade.
And, and if I might make a recommendation, we've got four grades represented in, in, in our spread up at the top. Maybe it's five slash six and seven slash eight that we put into the actual.
Well, five is five, right?
Five and six and seven and eight. And then that way.
But that would require them to do sixth grade puberty and we're not doing that.
Oh. No, five, in grades five or six and grades seven or eight.
Well, I think five is five. I mean, we've been doing five, they're saying five.
Yes. Do I have to go further? Can you just do five comma, seven comma, eight or five comma, seven comma, or log is nine is in the bottom.
Well, we're, we're, we're breaking out by grade level now.
So are we going to offer it in five and seven? We can just say in grades five and seven.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, and then can we put a statement in there that it's not, it's not offered in grades six and eight?
Do we need to if we're specifically saying that it's grades five and seven?
Right.
Right, but we're not excluding that either. We're not defining it. We're, we're leaving a gray area.
I agree. I had the same question. What about grades six and eight? We do need to mention that because that doesn't.
So you think all four years kind of circle back to it with increasing levels of sort of complexity and detail?
No, no, but, 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 but my thought process is, is it's offered in five and seven. We put a, we put a year, we put a grade spread at the top from five, from five to eight. Do we make that five and seven at the top and limit it that way? Or do we say down lower that we exclude? Or do we say that it could happen in either of those years with these parameters?
I think we should be very specific about what we're doing.
That's.
If we're going to teach it in five and, fifth and seventh grade, I think we're really clear. Fifth is hygiene and puberty only. Seventh is what we just went through. Anatomy, intercourse, human gestation.
Right.
Or S, uh, pregnancy prevention and STD prevention.
And we've got to also to comport to state law, include in that seventh grade offering shall include instruction on the laws relating to sexual conduct with a minor.
Yes.
That's a law. So are we looking just to say five and seven at the top?
I would be okay with that personally.
And we do have to then develop that curriculum and have it adopted by the board. So it really needs to be specific, like this is the grade level curriculum for.
Right.
Any additional comments before we move on to nine through 12? So in grade nine, is it your suggestion that we continue basically the same topics that we talked about in grade seven, only in greater detail?
One of the things that we need to think about if it's being introduced in the PE classroom, although that's offered for all of our freshmen, that's part of the general curriculum. You could have a sophomore or a junior scheduled into that class if they haven't had PE. And that does sometimes happen when they have a medical accident or something and they're taking that class. So as you're looking at this, if it's going to continue to be part of the introductory PE courses, students do have to take that year, it may not be limited by the grade level.
In, in high school only.
Correct.
So if we kept it nine through 12, that'd keep the window.
Yeah, you, I, high school becomes a completely different test on this because, because you're at a, you're at a maturity level assumingly in ninth grade and, and going forward.
Oh, but we'll go back up.
I would also like to see a bullet point in, in all the grades that, and this is why we were having a curriculum conversation earlier out of order. But I would like it in policy that, that parents will be given a copy of the curriculum that their students are going to be using. Now, how that happens posted or whatever, but I really want the parents involved. I want them to be able to have the conversations. And if they don't have what's being taught in school, they can't have the conversations. So I feel like it really helps both ways. Open the discussion and, and give them the tools to have the awkward discussion.
I don't disagree. I would say that the language of will be given might be a little bit problematic because then it suggests that we're handing out a packet to every parent.
Available.
Just available, yes.
Available through the district office or the district website.
How about?
Or upon request?
No.
Why not?
Because, because.
Because we're encouraging. It's not a, a cover your butt kind of thing. It's, we're encouraging and I would like to see shall, parents shall be given. Corey has a question.
Well, I was just going to make a comment on that. It's pretty easy at the level of the fifth grade because it's a video link. It's all, it's put up by Always, it's a YouTube video. So when I put the parent letter out, the link is on the parent letter.
Right.
The parents are invited so they can click on the link and watch the video.
And, and putting that on our website where this is what we.
At least at the fifth grade level.
Right.
It's, it's easy.
That, that, that would be easy.
Not a whole curriculum, it's a video.
And, and so, and so telling.
If that continues to be what the board adopts, yes.
Right.
Right.
If it continues to be.
But, but, but again, the transparency here for what we're, for what we're teaching in this subject matter is paramount. I mean, when the state of Arizona takes the time to write statute and law about how parents are informed and whether or not they opt in or opt out of, of this subject, I think it's, it's our job as a board to take the extra step here and not just check the box.
Well, I happen to think that making it available reaches that level.
See, this isn't just for us and what we're doing today. There's going to be a point where we're not here, where you're not here. Everybody here is retired and gone. And when this comes up again, or when there goes to be needed change, there's going to be a policy that says, parents shall be provided with the instructional material or with the, however that's worded. That's going to have to be changed and that's going to, alarm bells will go off. That will, you know, inevitably the paper will pick up on that. So I'm thinking about down the line as well. Again, this isn't math. This isn't one of the core, you know, curriculums. This is different. And I think that we need to be really clear that we are going to make sure the parents have every opportunity to engage with their student on this subject, their child on this subject. And the only way to do that is to make sure in policy that that's what we intend, that's, that's what we're going to do.
So, so let me give you an example of how we do that already today as a district. We provide handbooks to every student and every parent in our district, yes?
We have available on the website.
We provide.
We do not provide a hard copy.
We provide.
Yes.
The parent has to sign.
That's the same thing as making available.
The, the parent has to sign a letter that says that they have reviewed the material on the website.
Yes.
We are providing them the ability to come look at it.
Yes. Which I believe is very similar to make available.
Provide. Yes.
But shall is really the key word here.
But shall be given is a little bit different because then it does make it sound like you're giving out a handbook.
Terry.
In a hard copy format, yes.
Well, that's number five. Cover it regarding CrossFit out.
Yes.
It would for me, yes.
The board shall maintain for viewing. We'll fix it here in a minute. I want to add a few more things.
No, that doesn't cover it for me, just to be clear, because that's what we already have. And, and our community did not know that this was being done. So even the fact that it said shall maintain for viewing, shall provide the, the parent, that would be okay. But shall maintain for viewing, that goes back to the parent has got to make the effort to come in to.
So in fairness to Jamie, do you have a copy of, of the Tempe? Okay. There's a whole block on there called Parents' Role. So it starts out with, with a site where we have to provide prior written permission for the student to participate in, opt in the sex education curriculum. We need to put that in there at the elementary level as well. Because if any parent doesn't want their child in, they shouldn't have them in. I mean, if, if you're comfortable talking to your child at home about it, you should be able to talk to your child at home about it and not be forced to use the district system.
And that already exists.
But we need to put it in our policy.
Yes, although I believe it's a statute. So if we say that our instruction in sex education that's offered in the district is conformity with the requirements of Arizona law, then that already covers it.
We, we've had an issue historically, one time where we didn't bring an opt-in, we brought an opt-out on something that we should have had an opt-in on. And within that, we were able to then point to policy and not go all the way back to statute with, with the person that did that within our district. I think we need to make it clear in our policy that we absolutely do the opt-in. Whether, whether that's in rule or policy or statute, we need to write it down and make sure everybody's very much aware of that.
And I don't have a problem with that, but I would like some consistency. So if we're going to say, you know, at the top that we're going to conform with the requirements of state law and then list out the ones that we're conforming with.
I, I think.
And then also including opt-in, I'm totally fine with that. I just don't want to include some and not all of them.
Well.
Makes sense? Yes, okay.
Right, but we're talking about the fifth and seventh grade portion of this at this point. And, and what I have in front of me from, from Tempe is the one that goes through the high school level. And so I would like to see the entire Parents' Role block included in the elementary. Because the next thing it says, parents will be notified in advance of, and given opportunity to withdraw a student from any instructional presentations. And then it also says, parents who object to any learning material or activity on the basis that it is harmful may withdraw their child and, and so on. That block right there is very important. And it also goes straight to Mrs. Cohen's point. How's a parent going to know unless they are provided via, via website, via a letter that goes home that says, if you wish to review the curriculum, here it is? We've got to let these parents know. And if we don't, this whole section of state law and the rulemaking that goes along with it is moot.
And again, I don't have any objection whatsoever to providing access to the information. I just don't want us to get into a situation where we're sending kids home with a ream of paper, a hard copy, because we said we were going to provide them with a copy. That's, that's not my only problem with it.
But I don't believe that's your intent.
Okay, no, that wasn't my intent. So, and I would be fine with it saying, the board shall provide parents with access. That would be fine.
Perfect.
Because then that indicates that it's online and they are able to go review it. But I do, I do like the format, the way this is laid out. Boy, this would have been so helpful six years ago when I was looking at, like have a unified policy. I mean, it really is good, the way that they've added the rules in the statutes there.
So what?
We could also say that, you know, restate all these rules because just saying that these, we are going to abide by the rules doesn't mean anything to the.
They don't know what they are.
They don't know what they are.
Right.
So we could just leave all of them in there.
We could do, the way this is bulleted and because the print is so much larger, we could do something like, shall be in conformity with the requirements of Arizona law to include parent review of curriculum. Curriculum previewed and recommended by a committee. It doesn't have to be the entire statement. It could just be a listing of the things.
Oh, the statute.
I'd like to cite next to each one.
Yeah, and we can do that and make it a much shorter than this. And then as we're talking about, so for example. And then as we're talking about, so for example, even with the piece on the third yellow bullet where it talks about relating to sexual conduct, I mean, that piece could be added into just the statement under the grade seven.
Yes.
Pregnancy STD prevention and laws relating to sexual conduct with a minor. So you don't have to keep repeating the actual language of the statute as long as you've addressed every item in the statute there. So if we can narrow down what you want in it, we can draft up a version to, as we're going through like this, where I'm talking about some of the, just the bulleted pieces. And then if the board is interested in that, then we, once you've concluded this is what you want in the policy, we could bring it to the November meeting as a first reading. So you could see it in a format and don't have to worry about getting all the format right now on the screen as a possibility.
I think that would be helpful.
I do, too.
Ms. Cohen, could you please, again, for the last bullet, "Shall provide..." Could you give parents access? Shall provide parents access to instructional material before? Because then they would know whether or not they wanted to opt their kids in or not.
Yes.
Because they had reviewed, or at least had the opportunity to.
I also think, as we start to finish five and seven and we go into nine through 12, there's really a lot to like about what Tempe has done with their policy. I believe that if we took out the changes, which are basically under all sex education materials on the second page, where it says, "Promote and honor, respect for monogamous heterosexual marriage," that rule is more than likely coming out of the book. And then under prohibitions, the first two bullet points, if we took those out, I think that we could take this and move it to staff to condense this as well and bring it back as a coherent policy for the nine, 12 piece. I think that that would really serve us well.
Mr. Razz, I'm sorry. I heard you say the prohibitions part. What was the other part?
Prohibitions part, and then three-quarters of the way down, page two of four, where it says, "Shall promote honor and respect." That piece needs to go as well, I think.
And the prohibition, I'm sorry, the prohibition part that you're talking about is "shall not include the teaching of abnormal," that sentence that starts up with that. Is that correct?
The prohibition is on page three.
I'm assuming, though, you want to keep in there this paragraph right underneath that?
The one that says...
The little "district shall not include materials and instruction...
Absolutely, and I'm only talking about the first two bullet points under prohibitions. Again, where we get into homosexuality and alternate lifestyles that change to state statute, but that will inform this rule moving forward. But the one that we keep is the one that says, "suggest that some methods of sex are safe methods of sex." Who would keep that one in prohibitions?
So you are okay with the section on page two where it's talking about, "Shall include the following," and then it talks about emphasis on the power of individuals to control their own behavior, instruction on how to say no, instruction on the laws concerning date rape drugs. Those things, you're okay with leaving those in for grades nine through 12?
I am okay with leaving those in in grades nine through 12 as long as they apply equally to both sexes.
Okay.
One of the problems that I have seen in teenage dating is that those are equal opportunity gateways now. It's not just male predators. There are some females out there that also do the same behaviors. And I think educating young men on that, because I've seen situations personally where the young man has been abused in the situation and has said, "Well, what's the big deal?" Or, "I didn't get hurt out of that," or trying to be a guy with it. And I believe that it's just as harmful when women do it to men as when men do it to women. And I think if we're going to be honest with our student population, we need to point it out to both sexes.
I'd agree with that. Equal opportunity.
I would like to keep the "shall promote honor and respect for monogamous marriage." You know, that's what they should have done in the first place. But I still think that we should, I mean, we can pull out the heterosexual part because of the law change, but I still think that we should be promoting and honoring and respecting monogamous relationships because part of what our kids are hearing and seeing all the time is this hookup culture, which is producing the STDs that we're here writing the policy about. So I would like to keep that, that we would promote and honor that. Monogamous relationships.
If the state would approve that, I would be in favor of that as well. My fear is that if we keep that in there, that we may run afoul of the state board.
I don't see how. I mean, I don't see how.
Some bureaucrats somewhere will flag it, is my guess, but hopefully that will...
So monogamous relationships?
Yes.
Yes.
I could go along with that.
Yeah.
And in fact...
Marriage. I mean, I want to keep marriage.
Oh, I would just say relationships.
Well, see, I know, but I would like to, that's just it. I mean, people are getting the idea that we don't, you don't have to have a husband to have a baby. You don't have to be in a, you don't have to be married. It's just a piece of paper. I would still like to promote, and I know our community would still like to promote monogamous marriage, and because that is, since it's now legal, so says the Supreme Court, that applies to everybody who gets married. So why wouldn't we want to promote people being in a monogamous marriage?
Doesn't that fulfill the goal of what we're trying to do here and go to disease prevention at a minimum?
I think so.
Monogamous relationships definitely does. Now, we can talk about the marriage thing in a minute, but the CDC did specifically say with regards to a number of STDs that there isn't very good methods available of protection against certain diseases and that your best approach is to be in a monogamous relationship. So if we use that terminology, that would be consistent with the CDC's recommendations. And that, to me, makes... I'm sorry?
Or abstinence.
Right.
Or abstinence, absolutely. And they mentioned, the CDC mentions abstinence. I'm personally a big fan of monogamous marriage, but I'm not sure that it's the school's role to promote that.
So let me see if I understand this. One of the best ways to prevent the disease is to be in a monogamous, long-term relationship. And society has termed that marriage is the best way to do that, and we wouldn't inform the student of that?
I'm not talking about, first of all, you're making a large assumption there that society has decided that marriage is the best way to accomplish that. I think that's true for a number of individuals. I'm not sure that you can apply that broadly to all of society.
Could I imply that to 90% of society?
I'm not sure. I don't have numbers in front of me, do you?
I don't, but I have a sneaking suspicion that if we did a poll to get the numbers that we would find ourselves, if we polled adults aged 25 and older, that we would find the overwhelming majority of them would agree that that is probably a true statement.
You're drawing on quite a bit of assumption and speculation. It's okay. I'm not going to quibble over that part of it. I just feel like the relationship satisfies what we're trying to do, which is to protect students.
So, ask you a different question. If you're in a ten-year or longer committed monogamous relationship, are you married?
It varies of state by state because in some states you might be, you might satisfy the requirements for common law marriage.
So then is that not a good thing?
I'm not here to say it's good or bad. I'm just not sure that I want our schools saying that it's good or bad. I think that it might be better to just promote monogamous relationships because that is in keeping with protecting their safety and well-being.
Mrs. Fleming has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to clarify, so when we're doing this, oh, say, rule number three, B, five, it does say marriage on the rules, so...
But that was stricken. That's what was changed in statute. It just hasn't caught up with the example that John sent out. They haven't updated.
They put up the last...
Oh.
...rule with Rs. That, that now is what?
Oh, Rs, okay.
The one in our packet.
I don't mind adding relationship, but I don't want to get rid of marriage because I think that that is, I think that we need to send, I think we need to continue to send the message that marriage is a positive, a positive goal for people.
And I don't disagree with that. I do think that marriage...
But I don't mind relationships being added.
Okay, so if we said monogamous marriage and relationships?
I would be totally good with that.
May I just have a clarification on the second bullet point, that the materials will be available on the website? No, no, down under grades nine through 12.
I did it by nine through 12. And are they getting changes to it? That will say the same thing.
It'll say the same.
It'll repeat.
Thank you.
So from what I'm understanding, then, the nine through 12 section with a similar format, and the seven, five and seven, would you like it formatted the same way that this is formatted? And then, and I understood you to say that parents' role, but it may be important since we, it seems to have been an issue in the past, to include something about the review of curriculum by the governing board?
Yes.
So kind of, as you were talking about earlier, making sure that we're covering all of the points at some point in the section and categories?
And having the actual citations in there, I think, goes a long way to when somebody says, "Why is this here?" It's not a scramble to backfill it. For me, all I had to do was put one of the sites in, and it came right up in a Google search engine, and bang, here you go.
So we can format and bring it to the board for first reading, and then you would have a chance to see it all together and see what you think of it at that point?
And then make all kinds of changes then?
Of course.
Just...
No, I thought we made all the changes we were going to make tonight. And I agree with what has been said about, it's helpful to have the reference right next to it.
Yeah. We'll double-check all of these, make sure, because I don't know when this was last updated. At the risk of making an assumption, are you also looking at the regulation from Tempe?
I actually like the regulation a lot, too.
Because we did have both in our original packet. It's a one-page, three paragraphs.
What page?
It's the last page of the stand-up. It's three paragraphs, the regulation.
That's it.
Looks like this, sorry, Tempe one.
It says, "The district's family life education, aka sexual education, curricula shall be taught by certificated, in this case, Tempe Union employees only. Employees shall not deviate from governing board-approved sex education curricula and shall ensure that the parent slash guardian of each student has opted in to the district lessons in whole or in part as prescribed by Arizona law. Any and all outside organizations are explicitly prohibited from teaching any and all portions of the Tempe Union sex education curricula."
I like that. I don't know about the "taught by a certificated Tempe Union employee."
That would just...
Wouldn't that be a teacher?
Teacher.
Okay. I think I made it so complicated.
It's a complex way of saying, "Teacher."
Is it? Is there...
Although, you know, it may restrict us in cases where we have a nurse or, like, the psychologist facilitated for the boys at Starlane. I'm not sure if that would necessarily...
Could we take "certificated" out of there, then? Would that be helpful?
How about by, how about...
Certificated. Well, but isn't...
How about a board-approved, just replace it with "board-approved"?
Yeah.
Well, and then would you, it would be a house... Like, a case-by-case, this person's approved or this person is not approved?
It would be housekeeping, no different than we approve the teacher...
Evaluators.
Evaluators, every year.
Okay.
It's just saying that the board is aware of who's teaching the curriculum, so if that changes, it would come to the board.
So by board-approved employees?
Now, it doesn't say "teacher-certificated," so would the psychologist be included in that equation anyway? Does the psychologist have a certificate?
Teacher, yes. The psychologists do have an Arizona certificate. Nurses have a license, so they're not certificated, so understanding the difference there.
I don't think we need to have "certificated."
No, I think...
I really don't.
I think "board-approved employee" is a much better...
And just understanding that that list could possibly change annually, depending on staffing changes and stuff.
But then the board would always know who was teaching this family life sex ed. It would just be very transparent, so to speak, but at the same time, almost a housekeeping item. It's not like anybody's going to say, "Nope, I don't like that teacher. I'm voting no." I mean, I can't see that happening because if it's recommended by the administration, obviously, they've thought about it, so I think it just keeps the board in the loop on who's teaching these items.
And if you just say "employees," then that does leave the door open for a nurse to step in and teach a class.
Right.
If that employee is approved by the board one year, is it automatically rolled in because their contract renews every year?
Nope. Well, their contract renews every year, and every year there would be an adoption.
There would be a review.
A review.
Yeah, we would get a new list.
If we follow the practice with our evaluation, even though the same, it's often the same list, they are approved annually.
Is there anything further to discuss?
A question.
Yes.
Is the employee too vague because you have a wide range of employees?
I would agree, although because of the board approval that would be necessary, I think you wouldn't have a situation where a janitor is saying, "I'm going to..."
I was...
And, yes.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted "board employee" because they're in the position to evaluate whether it's a teacher or a nurse, or it may not be a teacher, but if the, you know, if the superintendent feels that this person is the best person for it, we're going to trust that recommendation, but at least we're going to know about it, and we're going to know who it is that's teaching.
Are there contractual staff as well, or is everyone employed?
We would not have contracted staff doing that. We can have, I think we still have some that maybe do speech or maybe not, but that would...
So if we have an employee that is on PREO and is not our employee that either, that's...
Employee or...
So, Jamie, when they're on...
Board-approved employee or contractor.
When they're on PREO, are they issued any type of contractual obligation from the district?
No, they're issued a contractual obligation through ESI who we're contracted with.
Okay, so maybe what we need to say is "certificated" or "board-approved"?
Certificated or what?
Board-approved.
Should we say "certificated slash licensed?"
Well, no.
Or "board-approved"?
No, I think you go with "board-approved." And the reason why that fixes what your concern is, because that's a certificated contracted employee, and that limits the fact that we have actual certificated personnel doing it. I mean, if you ran into, and I don't see this ever happening, but if you even ran into a situation where you had a sub, a long-term sub, doing this, and we felt comfortable with that sub, we could put the sub on the list potentially by doing that because they're certificated.
Well, I think because of the PREO situation, and that's a possibility, I think that it should just be "board-approved employee or contractor." They're going to make the decision. It's not like it's going to be somebody that just came out of the middle of nowhere and is a temporary contractor that we're going to put this program in their lap.
But there's a catch to that.
What?
We currently contract the Mojave County Health Department. So aren't they a board-approved contractor?
We have, the third paragraph says, "All outside organizations are..." We have, the third, the third paragraph says all outside organizations are explicitly prohibited.
There you go. That would cover Mojave County.
Are you gonna recommend that there also be a backup maybe, increase the working days for some of them?
It would come back to the board if they made a change.
Yeah, we, we would just simply run it again.
Yeah.
So we, let's, if you want us to bring this out, we can play with that wording to help us cover the.
ESI. God, only four hours.
Ten to eight. Everybody looks up their hall.
Last call for comments or discussion items. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Do we have my direction to bring back?
I will move that they adjourn.
Ms. Ramon?
Yes.
Rosie Ann Alliar?
Yes.
Joan Nasten?
See.